Call the meeting to order for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. If Mr. Sherlock, he would come up and lead us in an opening prayer. We appreciate that.
Let's pray. Praise the Lord with praise and thank you. The huge raised up men, women, willing to serve in the governance of our city. We ask your blessing and protection on them, their homes, their families and livelihoods. And we ask your blessing as well on all those who gather here. That each might continue to give generously talents, time, efforts and opportunities in the service of this community. We ask that you guide them with your Holy Spirit. That their deliberations and discussions be for the benefit of the common good and righteousness in your sight. On those divisive and contentious issues, grant them the ability to see beyond their personal opinions towards what's best for this community and its people. May they arrive at consensus such that even those disagreeing will not undermine but will support the decisions of the majority. But we ask that you help us make this community in world a better place because of our service. And we humbly ask for success in these matters, not for our own glory, but yours. We pray these things for our city, Grayson County, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and this nation, men, women and children, the godliness, fairness, justice and compassion of my prevail. We pray this now in the name of the one who taught us that real leadership is through service and that the way to true honor is through sacrifice. Amen.
Thank you. Well, that's Tootie Cotterwood. Now if you'd please in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Tootie. Next item on our agenda is approval of regular meeting minutes from November 18th, 2024. If there are no questions or concerns about the minutes for the audience and those watching on video, these minutes were sent out last week for everyone to look at, so they have had a chance to go over those.
All per the minutes from November 18th.
Okay. Motion by Billy, second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is ratification of, approval and ratification of the bills. If there are no questions or concerns with the bill list, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of the bills.
Motion by Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tootie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is second and final reading of an amended ordinance relating to the procedure to disconnect for non-payment.
An ordinance of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky amending ordinance number 2004-5 passed 6/7/2004 is amended by amending said ordinance and now therefore be it ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. That ordinance 2004-5 passed on 6/7/2004 is amended be and hereby amended as follows. The billing for solid waste collection service and water, sewer and/or gas utility services shall be consolidated and atomized on a single periodic billing by the Utilities Commission. Non-payment of any portion of the services billed on the consolidated billing shall constitute delinquency in the payment of the entire consolidated billing by the person or entity responsible for such payment who applied for the services and the owner of the real property and shall result in the termination of all utility services provided by the city until the delinquency is paid in full or an acceptable written repayment agreement is obtained pursuant to the terms of the utility disconnection policy established by the Utilities Commission. Upon services being disconnected, the unpaid portion of the services billed shall constitute a lien on the real property of the owner until paid in full. All ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict only, are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption. Re-adoption, publication is required by law. It's hereby authorized that publication of this ordinance be in summary form.
Any questions for Erlene on that ordinance? If not, I'll entertain a, go ahead.
Is this a roll call?
This will be a roll call, yeah. I have a motion to do a roll call.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Denny?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up is the first reading of ordinance amending ordinance 09-199, Article 1.8, to incorporate the definitions and land use regulations relating to medical cannabis. This is a first reading.
An amended ordinance related to the definitions and land use regulations regarding medical cannabis businesses. Whereas the City of Litchfield by ordinance number 2024-27 enacted an ordinance allowing cannabis business operations in the City of Litchfield. Whereas after publication and public hearing, the Litchfield Planning Commission has recommended a zone ordinance text change to address cannabis businesses is now allowed to operate pursuant to ordinance number 2024-27 adopted by the City of Litchfield. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky, that ordinance 2009-199 enacted on the 19th day of July, 1999 and last amended by ordinance 2021-20 passed on the 20th day of December, 2021 be amended as follows with added portions being underlined and deleted portions being indicated by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets enclosing them. The following is summary of said amended ordinance that Article 1-8 related to definitions be amended to incorporate definitions and land use regulations related to medical cannabis businesses. Article 3 is hereby amended to add Article 3-8.16 Medical Cannabis Permitted Zones Regulation and Use. As a true copy of said amendments are attached here too, made a part thereof, hereof by reference as set out in full.
Does anyone have any questions, Erlene or possibly Tyler, about this, this ordinance?
I do, Mayor, if I could. We had a kind of consensus among city council to also limit the cannabis dispensaries, not putting them next to churches. If on the next reading would be the second reading of the ordinance and it would pass, assuming it passes, could we at that time make a motion to send it back to the commission to add that additional restriction?
You can make that, you can make that motion to send it back.
After, after the ordinance is enacted?
I mean, it would be passed as stated.
Right.
And then if you want to amend it, then you would have to send it back.
Exactly.
And have that recommendation then come forward.
But we could do that.
You could, you could go ahead and pass it and then ask for them to reconsider that issue, but it would stand as submitted if you pass the ordinance.
Do you think that would be a better policy than just to vote against the ordinance and then let, send it back, let them start all over again? Or, or just go ahead and pass the ordinance, second option, pass the ordinance with the recommendation if the city council so moves to make the amendment to it?
I think it would be better to, to pass it and then that way you're moving forward and there is something at least in place.
By January.
Because there are deadlines approaching with the zoning regulations.
Can you work it in Monday, Tyler? Don't you have a meeting next Monday?
We do have a meeting, we can talk about it, but if we do any other changes, we have to have a public hearing, so we can't do that on Monday. It has to be published and notification sent out ahead of time. So the earliest we'd be able to do it would be the January meeting.
If I understood right, Denny, you're saying pass it as is.
Right.
On the second reading.
Right.
And then after the fact, you make an amendment to that, so.
Or make a motion to send it back to amend it.
After that, but there would still be something in place for those that need to move forward.
But you're talking about changing the, so many feet from a church.
Exactly. That's the only, that's the only change.
Right, right, which is not even mentioned.
No.
Right. And we had discussed that. And I think the consensus was to include that as an additional.
I'm not so big on the footage as I am just putting churches.
Next door.
Next door to, with them not being mentioned in the KRS.
What you could do, an amendment can start with you. It doesn't have to start with the planning commission, so you could pass it as it is now at the next reading and then you could sponsor an amendment yourself to add that in and then the planning commission would hold the public hearing and could add it in and then they send a recommendation back to you.
We need to have something in place by January 1. It has to be in place by January 1 and we're at December 2nd right now.
If we do it this way, it will be.
This will, but then we'll add that to it later.
Right, but it'll still be in place.
Yep. Yeah.
And that's the reason for doing it this way, so something is in place.
Honestly, I'm not sure it really matters based on the lottery picks, but anyway, okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
We don't vote now anyway, right?
Correct.
No, it is a first reading.
Thank you. Next up is, we had Home Care and Hospice Month proclamation. Some folks came in last week and got some pictures and wanted to do this and we need, we need to pass this if we, if you guys will, just to put it in our records and, and keep, keep track of that. So I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion by Billy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tootie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is to declare police department weapons as surplus, all are Glock 35s. And there is a list in the packet on the back page there.
David, I know before when we, when we did, years ago, did about the same thing. Are you offering them to your officers first?
They, they do.
They get first shot?
They do.
Good deal.
They do.
Who sets the price?
Fair market value is set by Keeslers. That's who we purchased our new weapons from and that's, that's who, any unsold weapons will be going to them for trade-in value. And they set to fair market value.
If you all will notice, I also added another serial number on there that was left off the list that I originally sent out. I noticed it when David brought another list over to me this morning comparing them. So there is one more weapon on there than what was originally sent out, so.
Any other questions for the chief on that matter? And I'll entertain a motion in a second to declare those weapons surplus.
I'll make a motion to declare the weapons of the police department as surplus.
Okay, motion by Gina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The following appointments are due for new appointments or reappointments. Tax Appeals Board, we looked at this last week, I've only had one person show any interest in this. William Buddy Brooks is the current chair holder. I think Lori looked that up, he cannot be reappointed, am I correct, Lori?
This is one we, every, every time we appoint, we have to appoint somebody new to it, so.
Yeah, and his term expires on 12/31. There is a name there that Ms. Thompson that is interested.
Was this advertised like the other ones?
Was this, we didn't put this out on, on our social media like we did the, the, this, we didn't put this or the airport board.
I talked with Charlotte, they meet once a year maybe, you know, she said they really never have any appeals, so.
Yeah. And if you guys are.
They meet in July, I think is what she said.
I'll make the motion to accept Carolyn's.
I do have a question though. I mean, we have an ordinance which Denny reminded us of, of the last, whatever committee it was, that says that we need to go through an interview process. So I mean, if we have an ordinance in place, is it not best practice to implement that ordinance, ordinance across the board?
If, if we've got one interested person.
We did the last time.
And you guys want to interview, I'm fine with that. This is just, if, if this is a direction you feel like we, you want to go, we can have her in here to interview.
I mean, that.
Absolutely, we've got till the 31st.
It is what the ordinance states and then also, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable because it was not advertised. No, I mean, she may have been the only one to ever apply for it, but we did not put it out there, push it out like we have the other positions.
Right.
And I'm fine with however you all want to do it. I think we need to clarify ordinance a little bit more because this is a county board and that's what Erlene's.
Yeah, I'm trying to look it up. I don't know if it's listed because I, I think every board is actually listed out in the ordinance and I don't think the Tax Appeals Board is on there. I'm, I'm looking at it right now. Let me, well, I'm sorry.
Took us, took us a little bit of looking to figure out who was on it and what it actually did.
I don't know who's on it. How many, how many are on it?
I can't remember what you said.
Who's on it? I mean, how many, does the city, how many do we appoint to it?
One.
One?
This is a county, basically a county board that we have representation on, from what I could gather.
So this is a county board, it's not a, well Gina, we've been on the board, so maybe Gina, you need to educate us about this.
Oh, I, it was years ago, but I think there were maybe three people.
On this tax appeals board.
And like she said, you only meet maybe once and you don't even meet then unless you have somebody who's wanting to contest a tax bill, so.
I feel like if we're going to do it, do something, implement this ordinance for one and do this, then we need to do it for all, whether it's a county board or not. It's somebody that is being appointed by the City of Litchfield and we need to be consistent with what we do.
Can we put that up on our social media tomorrow?
We can.
Lori?
Mm-hmm.
And that'll give a couple of weeks.
Right.
For somebody to express interest if they're interested.
Erlene, do I need to withdraw my motion?
You could table it.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table Billy's motion at this time, move forward. Grayson County Airport Board, Michael Pierce term expires on 12/31/2024. New term would be from 1/1/2025 to 12/31/2027. I would recommend that we reappoint Mr. Pierce through several meetings with the airport board and, and others that, that have been involved in trying to get the airport upgrade here. He's a very valuable piece of that. He's a pilot, flies in and out of here a lot. If you ever see a small helicopter go across town, it's probably him. Good person, hard worker for the, for the airport and the county and city, so.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Michael Pierce to the Grayson County Airport Board.
Okay. Terry, I got a motion from Terry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is Planning Commission. Wes Whitmore's term expires on 12/31/2024. New term would be 1/1/2025 to 12/31/2028. Wes has been on that, has he, he served one term on that board already. Tyler?
Yes. Yes. He actually finished, I believe, Denny's term.
Okay, okay. Is this something?
He's wanting to stay on it?
He's wanting to stay on it, yeah.
Yes.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Wes Whitmore to the Planning Commission.
Say it.
Motion by Gina, second by Billy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is Board of Adjustments. George Meredith's term expires on 1/1/25. New term would be 1/1/25 to 1/1/2029. And George has also expressed interest in continuing that, that position.
All right, I'll make a motion to reappoint George Meredith to the Board of Adjustments.
Motion by Gina. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tootie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Unfinished business, do you have some resumes here for the planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustments openings? You guys will take those and, and look them over. What, what are your thoughts there, Tyler, as far as narrowing it down and interviewing things like that?
I mean, I'll, I'll take input from anybody if you all want to reach out to me after you've had time to look over them, but I'd like to do the interviews at the, two weeks from today. We can schedule them before the council meeting and.
Okay.
And go from there if you are fine with that.
Is everybody good with that or?
I am, and I would like to make a comment. I like that we are seeing some different names. I feel like the, by us putting it out there that we do have vacancies on committees and commissions, that we are reaching a broader audience and I like the new names.
And there is, there is a kind of smorgasbord of people. There's different, different people, you know, there's, that apply, old people, young people.
Different backgrounds, different, I mean, it's, it's nice to see our community wanting to get involved.
Yes, I agree.
Did we just have the four? Is that all we've had for the, for, for four positions? Is that the size of it?
We do, we have four new ones. There are some that are on the, the current commission that can serve on the Board of Adjustments and vice versa. And some of them have said that they would be willing to do so, so we can keep that in mind in the interview process as well.
Will you know that at the next, by the next city council meeting?
I already know of one right now.
That would, so that would be four applicants for three positions then? If you do it that way?
And we can have two. And we can fill both the Board of Adjustments positions with somebody on the Planning Commission or we can fill the Planning Commission with somebody on the Board of Adjustments.
Last time, didn't we have like a dozen applicants for the one position?
Yeah, we had quite a bit more at the last one, so.
Okay, I assume those people probably weren't interested in that line again. So, thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, since Tyler mentioned maybe doing these before the council meeting, I'm going to kind of jump down to other business. The next meeting is Budget and Finance before the council meeting and Sabrina, I talked to her this afternoon, with the amount of amendments she's going to ask, that maybe we start that earlier. So we need to try and figure out how early we want to start that and when we want to do those and.
Well, we could do it a different day. I mean, it's whatever you guys want to do, what you agree to.
What does your schedule look like?
I'm hoping anytime.
I mean, I'm good with a different day if you want to do a different day.
We all work until 3:00 most days.
I know Denny's schedule's tight.
Pretty tight right now.
Yeah.
At least for us this week.
Gina, what do you think?
Mine's like, I mean, mine's all over the board. I can't say from day to day what mine's going to be.
I mean, even if we could do them another day.
Tyler, why don't you give us a few days to choose from and just send it out?
Right.
Okay. All right, unfinished business. Billy?
Yes, sir.
Terry?
No.
Tootie?
No, sir.
Gina?
No.
Denny?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Billy?
You, we went through the bill list, you might see some new names on there from Junior Pro. Be on there, so if you, if you wonder about new names, ask Lori or, because there's going to be several people that will be new drawing a check that we're not used to. That's all I have there.
Okay. Terry?
No.
Okay, Tootie?
No, sir.
Gina?
No.
Denny?
No, thanks.
Lori, Erlene. All right, thank you, guys. We'll move on down the agenda to other business. Reminder, there will be a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on December 16th at 5:00 PM. This could be a long meeting with the amount of amendments, so maybe start earlier at 4:00, 4:30. So what are your, what are your thoughts, Lori, 4:00, 4:30? What's going to work best for everyone?
I would say 4:30. Surely, surely we won't need two hours for the amendments.
Okay.
But if you all want to start at 4:00, I'm, I'm, I'm here, me and Sabrina will be here at 4:00 no matter what, so I don't, who is Budget and Finance?
That's this side.
Yeah, so what do you all, y'all want to do 4:00, 4:30?
Anytime's fine with me.
I would feel more comfortable with 4:00, just in case.
Okay. We can do 4:00.
You okay with 4:00?
I'm good, yeah, anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before that meeting, we'll meet Budget and Finance Committee at 4:00 o'clock that afternoon. Okay. Next chamber luncheon is Thursday, December 12th. Please let Lori know by noon on December 9th if you plan to attend. The city's annual Christmas dinner will be Friday, December 13th at 6:00 at Center on Fire Department Christmas dinner is December 7th at 6:00 PM. Light Up Litchfield, December 6th at 5:00 PM at Bevel Park. 2024 Hometown Christmas Parade, December 7th at 3:30. 2024 Christmas on the Square is December 7th at 4:30. And I think, I think there's going to be some extra treats for people on the square after the parade. I think they have a snow machine coming in. I think there's going to be a portable ice rink come in, which is something we've never tried before. Tammy?
Yeah.
You can, you can tell that better than I can, so. Next time you raise your hand.
Raise my hand. Yeah. So at the Christmas on the Square, Tourism is sponsoring an ice rink. It'll be free to the public, there's 70 people allowed on the ice at a time and it is free to, all the equipment that you need for ice skating except for your winter clothes will be available. So I think it's an exciting thing that we're expanding this out. I do invite you to please come to Light Up Litchfield. We have over 50 vendors there or businesses that I've set up and several new ones. Wilkenny and Lala where we sing. And then the parade starts at 3:30 and like I said, Mayor said, there's a lot of vendors on the square and you'll be really surprised by the difference we have. We also have live music, so we hope that you all will come and enjoy the time.
Two questions. Will the trolley be running from the bottom of the hill up to the top for the light up in the park?
Yes, yes, we, we've done that every year.
Okay, I've only been once.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, I'm usually busy.
Yes, we have, I'll be decorating it, me and Elsa are decorating it and then we'll have, Keith will be driving the trolley back and forth.
And is the ice real?
No.
No.
Synthetic.
It's a synthetic. Yeah, because they have to set it up in the parking lot and then tear it down. I think it.
It looks real. They have one at Bowling Green Farmer's Market every winter, so.
It'll be exciting.
It will, that's nice.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Wesley just texted and wanted us to remind everybody that the Public Works Breakfast is this Friday at 7:00 AM.
Okay, Public Works Breakfast this Friday at 7:00 AM.
And how many will we have riding the float in the parade this? I'm just trying to figure out how much candy I need to buy when I go pick everything else up, so. I'll be there.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Does it have to wear size?
Okay. Anything else, other business that we've missed or anything, guys? Anything else, other business that we've missed or anything, guys? Okay. We will move on to visitors. Steve Meredith and Samara Heverin are here to speak to us and give us a legislative update. We certainly appreciate them taking time to come out here and enlighten us on some things. This, this is my speech.
Yeah. Nice.
Yep. Happy to, we appreciate the opportunity to get to speak to you all this evening about the upcoming legislative session. It's our 30-day session, and this will be the 25th anniversary of having a 30-day legislative session. It was passed back in 2000, changed our constitution. Before then, we used to meet every two years for 60 days. And back when I was in hospital business, I thought it would be a good idea if we met for two days every 60 years, but since then I've changed. Before I get into that, Mayor, I'd like to take care of one, care of one little housekeeping item if I, if I may. Yes, sir. It is legislative related. I could like to read this proclamation. "From the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come greetings, know ye that Jenna Carnes and Denny Fitztruss are recognized and honored for their invaluable service as vital members of Litchfield City Council, where they have served a great distinction over the past two years. As much they are public servants of the highest caliber, who have continually utilized their time, talents, and resources for the betterment of Litchfield community and the lives of its residents. They are offered sincere commendation and gratitude for their exemplary service, are extended best wishes for continued success and good fortunes in all their future endeavors, and on the motion of Senator Stephen L. Meredith and Representative Samara Heverin, are hereby deemed by the Sarmo body most worthy of this recognition. Signed by Robert Stivers, President of the Senate, and David Osborne, Speaker of the House of Representatives." Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
If, if you don't mind, could you, again, give me your mailing address so I can send you the check after the meeting?
I think you have that, Dean, but I can, I can do that again. Steve would rather have one of those mason jars buried in the backyard.
Thank you, guys.
Well, I want to commend you guys and all of you for your public service.
Thank you.
It's not an easy task, because you learn, once you get into the job. And I'm very blessed to be able to serve with this young lady. I represent five counties. I've got Meade, Breckridge, Grayson, Butler, Ohio County. She represents Grayson and Hardin County, so we have to work in tandem to get things done. And I think the time that we both have been in office, we've been very successful when it comes to Litchfield and Grayson County. It's just going from memory, this spring we will have the bypass construction, we'll start. It's about a $15 million project. Two previous budget sessions, we were able to get $9 million for expansion of the E-Town Community College Litchfield Campus, which that also started this coming spring. Right. This last budget, we were also able to get $1 million to help deal with the water problem in Anetta and the Nolan Lake area that the problem belongs to, Evans County Water District, but a good portion of Grayson County is there, we're willing to take care of that. And also this most recent session, we also received $10 million for development of an industrial park in Litchfield, in Grayson County, which we desperately need.
Yes.
So as we head into this 30-day session.
Well, Steve, I want to make one more announcement. The most important, I think, to everyone in Grayson County is the new trapper's license.
Yes, open, open today, is that right?
Steve and I were able to get money in the budget this year to bring that to Litchfield. So if you, it opened today, it was a soft opening, I believe. But it's at the old GameStop by Walmart. So we're very lucky to be able to bring that here. To have strong voices in Frankfort to get things like that, so you don't have to go to county to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, we can reach 70 right to you. Your memory is not what it used to be, but also we, we received $10 million for renovation of the vocational school in the previous budget session, so it's been a good run. But now we hit a 30-day session, and at least in our chamber, the Senate, we've talked the last two 30-day sessions about getting back to the original intent, which was to kind of clean up legislation that we had previously passed and fix problems, but it's grown almost into a full 60-day session within a 30-day timeframe. And that's not the best method to get legislation passed, so I'm hoping it's gonna be a quiet 30-day session, at least on the Senate side. I don't know any really major initiatives that are out there we need to address, but I'm sure as we file bills, because we have 138 legislators and each has their own agenda that we'll see some things crop up, but that's pretty much the 30-day session about on the House side.
Yeah, I think it'll be very similar in the House. Of course, we have several new members on both chambers, so a lot of people will be wanting to pass bills. But I think a lot of us are ready just for a regular cleanup session. Now, we say that, and by the beginning of March, everyone will have a ton of bills. I think for some of the cleanup, we're gonna be looking at, I know for families and children, which I chair in Frankfort, we're gonna be looking at kinship care follow-up and foster care. I know here in Grayson County, we are looking for foster care parents. And so making sure to elevate that and do what we can as a state to make sure those kids are taken care of. And then, of course, the discretionary funds got moved from the governor's office, and so we will be allotting money for that through the General Assembly, so I think that will be at the beginning, which is a little different, because we generally don't open up the budget if we don't have to, but we will for that. We'll open up the transportation budget, which those are two separate budgets, Transportation and General Fund. But I think, you know, hopefully we're, I know both of us have caucus retreat coming up, and so that's really a time for both caucuses to get together, both of us being in the majority caucuses, for to get together and kind of plan out what that looks like. So as always, I think both of us will be having a legislative survey come out shortly. You can, you'll get it in the mail or online, so make sure to fill that out, because it gives us the opportunity to really hear what people in our districts care about and what we can be doing to be helpful. But always, we're open to conversations, and anytime someone needs something, we try to be helpful if we can.
We just received notification this morning of the committee appointments for the Senate, and I've been reappointed chair of the Health Services Committee. So obviously, my focus of the next session is gonna be on healthcare issues, and there are lots of those, but my focus is on trying to protect rural healthcare and improve access to it. But quite candidly, I'm more interested in the next 60-day session, because that's where the big decisions are made about how money is spent. And that's a little bit over 400 days away, but you need to be thinking about it right now.
Yeah.
Because the worst thing that can happen is we go in session, somebody says, oh, we need a few million dollars for this or that.
Yeah.
So you tell us how we can help you, and you then help us by letting us know. And I gotta be quite candid with you, I'm concerned about the, the future of Litchfield and Grayson County. We got some real challenges. I think over the next 10 years, we're probably being the most challenging decade probably in our lifetime. And I reflect back on my 70 years, and particularly 60 in this community, and, you know, before 1960, Grayson County's economy was 90% agricultural. And then in the 60s, so much happened, and this community's always been an enigma to me, because you see what's happened to us over that period of time. We got the two lakes that were built, we got the Parkway that came through the county on bisecing our entire county. We started an industrial foundation that brought new industry here. You know, from 1960, I think to 1972, the per capita income in Grayson County increased by over 275% because we created new jobs. Built a new high school, consolidated a high school. But we were really on a path forward, but it seems like we plateaued a little bit. Councilman Fitztruss and I were talking earlier, that the last census, for the first time, the second time in the history of this community, we lost population. And that's not a recipe for success, and we need to be concerned about that. I mentioned the $10 million appropriation for a new industrial park. We're already behind the eight ball. It's very disappointing that we don't have any places currently prepared to recruit new industry. It takes a while to get to that point. So what I need to really know from you folks is, you know, what's our vision for the community? Need to know things like, what's the five most important strengths this community has? We have a lot of them. What's the five greatest weaknesses that we have? And how are we gonna address those? What's the five greatest opportunities we have to grow this community? And how are we taking advantage of that? And what's the threats we see to this community? I think, you know, the, the challenge we have, and again, I can say that because I grew in this community, is we just don't like change. And I'm here to tell you, change happens whether you want it or not. And neither you can control it, or it's gonna control you.
Yeah.
But I've heard people say things like, well, we don't want to see this community change. Again, it changes whether we want it or not. Secondly, well, I kind of like us being a Mayberry. Well, again, we were never a Mayberry. You know, Mayberry never had 25% of its population living in poverty. 31% were children living in poverty. People said, well, maybe we need to be a bedroom community for Hardin County. Okay, maybe, but think about that. What kind of bedroom community do you want to be? Because one of the biggest challenges and threats I think that this community faces is property values increase in Hardin County, they're gonna be pushing a lot of people out. And it's probably that the can't, people can't afford housing to begin with. So I think we had a stand a real chance to increase the population, but we also stand a real chance of increasing the poverty level in this county. I'm sad to say, with all the assets we have available to us here, again, the two lakes, the two parkways, the great hospital system and great school system, our socioeconomic profile looks more like Eastern Kentucky than Central Kentucky. And I think if there's one job that all of us have, I don't care what elected your officer, it's improved the quality of life of people that were elected to serve. And I don't think we're prepared to do that.
Yeah.
You know, if we're fortunate to develop this industrial park, it's gonna take a few years to do that. Then we're gonna have to recruit the, the new industry, gonna have to recruit, develop the workforce here. But we have to move forward, or I would hate 10 years from now we see that we've lost more population in this community. Tragically, I had somebody tell me in one of my other counties, they said, you know, what happened to Litchfield? I said, what do you mean? They said, well, it used to be rocking and rolling, that's the place that everybody else wanted to be. I said, what happened? And you all have to admit, if you look over the last 50-year timeframe, we've kind of stagnated a little bit. And I think it goes back to lack of a vision for this community. And I'd ask each of you, can anybody articulate what that vision is? What do we want to be? And if we don't know what that vision is, how do we know where to go? How do I get there? We don't. So I'd encourage you, particularly as you're getting two new council members, that these folks, take a hard look at that and formulate that vision for the community, because we as elected officials should be able to answer that question. You know, I want to see Litchfield and Grayson County reach its full potential, and we've fallen very short of that. You know, it falls back on us if we don't reach our potential. But we owe our constituents much better than what, what we've given them of late. You know, it's very frustrating to me, again, looking at this time, 50-year timeframe, and Tootie, you remember, Dean, you may remember as well, that back in the, the 60s, we had a group, it was the Grayson County J.C.'s, wanted to develop a community center, because we weren't doing enough for our youth in Grayson County. Sounds like a common refrain, doesn't it? Well, we raised some money, we sold concrete blocks, and people would put their family names on them, they raised some money, I don't have much, but for some reason, that ideal disappeared, as did the money. Then years later, Terry Benell, who was president of Litchfield Deposit Bank, decided he would try to build a YMCA to Grayson County. Great interest in the beginning, but then failed. Now, as hospital central CEO, I tried to develop a healthplex, which would have been indoor swimming pool, Olympic sized swimming pools, or a high school athletic swimming team, basketball courts, walking track, racquetball, as long before pickleball, but pretty much a full-service community center. That project was gonna cost $8 million. We got commitments for $6 million, and I asked our hospital to borrow a million, came to the city, asked the city to borrow a million, and we were told, no. But yet, three years later, we built an outdoor pool, which, great facility, love it, but can only use it three or four months out of the year. So I know you folks are trying once again to do this, and it looks like we're going down that same path, and just kind of getting mired in the mud, mired in the detail, mired in the personalities, maybe mired in the issue of who's gonna be responsible for this, or who's gonna get credit for it. We gotta get beyond that. One of the biggest problems that we have is brain drain in Grayson County. And I think the state average for, for our citizens that have at least a BS degree, it's like, I believe, 21%. We're at 13%. Our young people are leaving and they're not coming back. And they're, if you look at the time. Grayson County is pretty much a who's who in other communities. We need that people, that growth here, need to bring our people back, need our community to grow, but we need to do it in a positive manner. You know, the best way to predict the future isn't to invent it. So again, the challenge I give to you folks is, we want to help you, but we need to know where you're going to get together. So I'd encourage, again, take a hard look about where we are. Let's do some introspection, and let's try to move this community forward the best we can. Again, I want to commend you, you did a great job, you do. Public service is not easy, it's thankless, and, but I'm here to thank you and tell you that we certainly want to work with you and make this community everything it deserves to be. I appreciate you guys saying that, and we, we appreciate what you guys do, too. It doesn't go unnoticed. I'm sure you don't hear it every day, most of the time, most people don't, that, that work toward things like we do, but. Well, I think we all know what we've got in for, and it truly is a, a unique calling, but we're, we're blessed to serve. Appreciate the opportunity to get to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Which is just moving forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Other visitors, Scotty, do you have a list back there that people signed in on? If you, if you do wish to speak further tonight, if you would put your name on the list, and we'll just call you guys up as, as your, as the order that you're, you signed up in. Do you, do you, can you bring that list to me, please? Thank you. Okay. First on the list is Keith Harold. Keith, do you wish to?
I'm not here to speak. I was informed about the list. I thought I called visitors at the sign.
Okay, all right. Rita Strickland?
Same for me.
Okay. Tim Moody there? Okay. Jacob Clark? If you would come forward, Jacob, and will the mic will pick you up there?
Good evening.
Evening.
First time I've been to the city council meeting. I'm actually just barely outside of the city for now. They've talked about annexing me, but I'm still part of this community and still contribute tax dollars to it, and I've got a lot of good friends and family members that have concerns, and I've been asked to speak for them and, and, you know, several people, and just asked three simple questions, really, two of them, I, I really already know the answer to myself. But anyway, the first question, does a city council member have the authority to hire and fire city employees? I don't know if you guys are in the practice of answering the questions that are asked here. I don't know. And the second question, does the mayor have the authority to hire and fire city employees? And like I said, I, I understand the answers to those myself already, but there are folks that wanted those answered. The third question, I don't know. Is LPD Officer DJ Newton currently on paid or unpaid leave? Are these any questions that you guys are gonna answer this evening?
Generally, and what we've done, Jacob, is, is our attorneys have asked us to not to, to discuss pending litigation, things like that. Couple of your questions I can answer, I think. Okay. City council does not normally participate in hiring and firing of employees. I think, I think generally, the council's role is, is an advisory role in that situation. Obviously, if they've got concerns, they would, they, they would talk up to us about it, relay those concerns. But as a general rule, the council does not hire or fire individuals. The mayor, my position, I do have the authority to hire and fire people. We have, we have done that in the past.
We have done that in the past. But yeah, that's, you know, as far as DJ and his position, Arlene, you...
It is public record. I think it's already... There's already been a press release. Officer Newton is suspended without pay at this time. I think that's been made public record at this time. I think it was in a press release.
I can't hear you, Arlene. Is your mic on?
I believe it's been in the press. It's public record, it's available, that Officer Newton is suspended without pay at this time.
Okay. So, the mayor does have the authority to hire and fire. It's not common practice, I understand. You don't want to just exercise this authority over every situation. And then another question I would add is that although the city council members don't have the authority to hire and fire, they do, they can actually present a resolution, though, to request that the mayor do so. And that would be something, if their constituents were piling on them to do so and pressuring them to do so, that's how this thing works. That's how our country works.
Yeah.
The people pressure the representative, they pressure the mayor and those things. Is that pretty correct on how things ought to go?
Yeah. You know, I value what these ladies and gentlemen say. And if there's reason, then we'll listen to what their reasoning is. Absolutely. And, you know, as a council, as a city government, I think it's imperative that the mayor and the council have a good working relationship. So, I trust their judgment. I try to earn theirs on my end. But yeah, you know, I know it's kind of a technicality, some jargon or something, but to say they don't have the ability to hire and fire is maybe not completely true. If there's a problem and they want to address it, we definitely address that.
Yeah, there's a process.
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of people asking and assuming all kinds of things, so maybe that'll help clear some things out.
Yeah. As far as... And I'll add one thing. As far as the police department, there is a document called Police Officers Bill Rights that changes... It's different than the way I can deal with somebody from Public Works, from the animal shelter, from fire department, from whatever. Police officers have an officer's bill rights. And I'm not... Is that a state document, or is it a federal document, Arlene?
It's a federal.
It's federal, okay. So, there's a federal document out there that points out and outlines what we can and can't do in the event of an officer.
So, it's like qualified immunity?
Kind of, but you can pop it up on...
Sure.
On... Online and read it, and it's several pages. But it does give you some insight into what goes on when you deal with something with the police department versus any other employee in the system, so.
I'll do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else?
First of all, I'm really sorry about your fire. I really am. Second, Kentucky League of Cities is who you all have your interest through, right? Kentucky League of Cities Policy and Procedure Manual. Officer will not enter in an active fire scene to recover any animal, family pet. Officers shall. When you say "shall" to a policeman, don't give him the option. He don't have the option to say, "I'm not doing it." "Shall" means you will do it, or they'll find somebody else to do the job. Shall make every attempt to prevent anyone other than fire personnel from entering in an active fire situation. Intimate life-threatening situations, if personnel believes an intimate life-threatening situation, when immediate action could prevent the loss of life or serious physical injury, enter into a hazardous area, shall be permitted. Officers have 15 seconds to make a decision. That 15 seconds, you have a man with a water hose. I understand he wants to save his house. I would, too. I would, too. I'd be the first to say that. You've got a man with a water hose. They're telling you there's lithium batteries in there. They're telling you they're blowing up. You've got a smoke-filled house. You all paid him. You all hired him to go in that house. You all paid him. You hired him to keep anybody other than fire personnel from going in that house. My opinion, it's a disgrace to the police department that he's not being paid right now, because you're punishing the man for doing his job. He never broke a single law, not one. He was told, that's his job. If he has to use force to keep that person out, then that's it. That's just the way it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And as we said earlier, we definitely... We want to hear everyone's concerns. We do. We're open to speaking with anybody. There's just not a lot of comments we can make at this time. Pending litigation, attorneys have told us, the KLC attorneys have told us, that we don't need to make any comment at this time. But any time that anyone has a concern or questions or anything like that, I think I can speak for the council. Any of us would be willing to sit down and listen to you. And I believe that, you know. So, anyone else? Penny, do you have anything?
Actually, I have one more than what I come in here with, so I'll just wait till the next minute.
Anyone else? Anything? Any council have anything before we adjourn? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tootie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks. Thank you all for coming today, too. I appreciate you being here.